Voice of San Diego is a media partner of Pop Up Magazine, a live magazine created for a stage, screen, and a live audience. Come see this sensational night of true stories featuring your favorite writers, radio producers, and comedians at the Observatory North Park on September 23rd. Tickets and information at popupmagazine.com.
Thanks for joining us on the Voice of San Diego podcast in partnership with News Radio 600 KOGO. I'm Andrew Keats, Assistant Editor here at Voice, and I'm joined by an education team. We've got an education-focused show this week, joined by education reporter Will Huntsberry. Will, what's up, my man?
That's me. What's happening?
And then working the ones and twos over here, we got multimedia producer Adriana Haldies.
What's up?
It's like morning talk show stuff right here. Good.
Adriana, what's your DJ name?
Oh, DJ, um...
DJ Hot Cheeto?
No, no, no. It's DJ Miss Chica. I'm not, I'm not making that up. My friends gave me that.
You're an actual DJ.
Yeah, because they're like...
I'm not making that up. I have, I have gigs and everything.
Every weekend, I'm at your local emo club, like just going at it.
All right. Well, Adriana, a couple of weeks ago, you wrote a great story, photo essay. Went to school with a student in San Ysidro who has been the victim, one of many victims, of the slashed bus routes in that area. So we're going to talk about that a little bit later. We also got news this week that there is going to be a shakeup on the Board of Trustees at San Diego Unified.
True, true.
Talked to Will about that. And then a layer beneath that in the leadership structure of San Diego Unified, there's some-
Mad principals, some real mad principals.
Some mad principals. That's not like a modifier. That's as in-
They're actually mad.
The principals are angry. And we're, so we're going to talk about that. Briefly, I do want to add a quick update. Last week, we talked about the vacancy, the congressional vacancy after Susan Davis resigned. In the time since then, two of the people that we discussed as potential candidates have indeed declared their candidacy. Sarah Jacobs, who ran in the 49th district unsuccessfully in 2018, has said that she will be running. She declared that this weekend. And like just minutes before we walked in here, Council President Georgette Gomez has confirmed that she will be running as well.
Heavy hitter.
So just put it, I just want to underline what a, what a big move she's made here because she's council president, she's MTS Chair, she's the lead person in charge of the MTS ballot measure that's potentially going to qualify for the ballot next year. And she doesn't have a free ride. A free ride, we say, like your, your, your term straddles the, the opening here.
Sure.
She has to technically run for reelection for the city council right now. But you can't only, you can only run for one thing at a time. So she will actually be in a position where if she were to lose this congressional seat somehow to Sarah Jacobs or anybody else who gets in-
She's out.
She'll be out of office.
Yeah, that's a risky move. It's her, but it's, it's Congress, right? I mean, she, it's Congress versus city council, right? That is, that's, that's the calculation.
That's the calculation. Yeah. Now, she's, she's in a more powerful position than anybody else in the city council, but it's, you know, it's still.
Wait, so remind me, what area does the 53rd cover?
It's a, it's a bigger area than people give it credit for. Susan Davis lives, I believe she lives in Kensington. So people have often associated with like the mid-city, mid-city uptown neighborhoods like Hillcrest, North Park, Normal Heights, South Park, Golden Hill. And it does cover that area, but it also stretches into portions of City Heights, though not all of it, down into Spring Valley, Lemon Grove, La Mesa, East Chula Vista. So it's a, it's a pretty, I mean, congressional districts are big. So this is, this is also big.
Here's the thing about Congress. Congress is huge, right? There are, I don't know, 200 and something members, maybe it's 400. I can't remember. Georgette Gomez is just going to be one of many. But like, what is the council going to look like without her? I mean, she's made housing like a big issue. She's been aggressive on it. Like what happens without her?
Yeah. So there, I guess there's two things to say there. One is on her, like some of the housing priorities that she's put forward. For instance, you know, she, she led a charge to make sure that it was, it was illegal to, to punish Section Eight voucher holders in San Diego. That's a law that was now passed at the state level yesterday and needs, goes to the governor's desk for a signature. That was something that she brought forward. She's still working on this inclusionary housing-related ordinance.
Right.
So it's kind of up in the air who will, if anyone will take charge on some of the policy issues she's brought forward. But it also means potentially that in December of 2020, January 2021, that you would have five new city council members and that the oldest city council member would be Chris Kate, who was just elected to his second term in 2018. The other 2018 electees would, are Vivian Moreno and Monica Montgomery. They would suddenly become elder statesmen on the city council as well.
Exactly.
And they're the youngest people in the council right now. Youngest in terms of how long they've been on the board, not their actual-
So just can Monica, can Monica Montgomery fill Georgette Gomez's shoes as the, the kind of get it done?
Yeah, I think Monica Montgomery could. I think Vivian Moreno could. I mean, Chris Kate, I think has, would be qualified to do so, but he, he's a Republican, so he probably wouldn't be elevated to that position.
Right.
I think Monica or Vivian both could without question. And, you know, it wasn't long ago that Georgette was not seen obviously as this, you know, standard bearer. So it kind of, you know, people, people step into leadership positions. It would just be a void that one of those people or, or one of the newly-elected council members would have to step into.
That's going to be an interesting council.
It's a new city hall. All right. So speaking of vacancies, what, this is what got us started on this. Will, talk to me. What happened? Was it Monday morning? Monday, it was Monday morning, right?
I think it was Monday. Yeah, Monday, just out of the blue.
So Monday morning, tell us a little bit what we learned from School Board Trustee John Lee Evans.
John Lee Evans, uh, been on the school board as long as anyone except Richard Barrera. Came out of the blue and told us he was not going to run again. So he's got about another 15 minutes, 15, 15 months on his term. And-
Time's up.
See ya, John.
John Lee Evans hurriedly typing like, like a college student trying to get in before a deadline. Ah, the printer won't work!
So we found out he wasn't going to run again. He, he wrote this long kind of blog post talking about what he considered to be other great board members and-
Which was not all-inclusive.
No, it was not all-inclusive at all. It was not all-inclusive at all. So he, so he gave us this big announcement first, like, okay, I'm not running anymore. That, that raises interesting questions about what's going to happen on the school board. But then he referenced the nine people he served with and kind of playing it close to the vest said, "Three have lived up to my standards for highly ethical board members."
Yeah, highly ethical and highly qualified.
That's right.
Like he's created multiple buckets now. There's like the people that are both ethical and qualified, the people who are qualified but not necessarily ethical.
Right, right.
And the people who are maybe ethical, but they perhaps don't have the qualifications. And he did confirm to us, I think, who those three were.
Well, he named two in the blog post, though, and he said it was Richard Barrera and Sharon Whitehurst Payne who are on the board now. So we're like, well, who is the third? Is it, is it Mike McQuarrie who's also on the board, also could run again? It doesn't sound like it's him.
Yeah, it seemed like it wasn't him. Otherwise, you would just say his name, right?
Right, totally, totally. Scott got involved. Scott was obviously very interested in this. He, he hopped on Twitter and he's like, "So are you saying Dr. Mike's not qualified?" I believe.
Or ethical. I don't know which, which one of those, yeah.
One, we're not sure which.
It kind of reminds me of like my teenage years on Twitter when I used to subtweet and like-
It was, it was definitely a subtweet. There's no question.
100% yes.
Well, and so, Will, you're relatively new to covering the San Diego School Board, although it doesn't, still doesn't really feel that way, but-
The politics elude me sometimes, but I do my best.
But, but it would be fair to say that like a school board member talking about other school board members this way is not how we typically think of members of the San Diego Unified Board of Trustees. There's much more to, unintentional pun here, unified front among the board members typically speaking.
Yes, yes. There's, it's certainly right now, the board is really united in, in terms of how they present themselves and the work they're doing. I mean, this is of course minus Kevin Beiser, who we've reported about a lot. The other board members have asked him to resign because of his scandal.
When we should say John Lee Evans specifically, I think, has been the most outspoken of the board members about the fact that he, he believes Kevin Beiser should resign.
Totally.
He was the person who asked the board to dock it an item, to ask for his resignation. And he has repeatedly given public comments saying Kevin Beiser needs to get off the board.
Right, right. And now, just to go back to the thing with Dr. Mike McQuarrie there, we don't know what John Lee Evans was, was thinking when he wrote the post that way. It seems one possibility is that he knew Dr. Mike wasn't going to run again and he scooped him in that because then Scott had to follow up on all that. He talked to Dr. Mike McQuarrie. Turns out, Dr. Mike's not running in 2022. So now we know that there's two board members who could run again-
Yeah.
Based on the three-term limit that they themselves passed and decided not to. I don't know quite what to make of that.
Yeah. And so previously, there were no term limits, right?
Correct.
And then they passed a, a new term limit that said, "Your old terms don't apply here. Starting now, you get three terms."
Yes.
So all of these people, in addition, you know, they've already been on the board for a while, could serve an additional 12 years.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And they're both saying, "I'm out of here."
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm done. You know, and they, they talked about Vision 2020, right? Which is the big San Diego Unified plan, which says, "We're going to have a quality school in every neighborhood." That's the goal. We, we don't know exactly what quality means. We could come up with a lot of metrics. And, and to do that plan, they've throttled back on choice and not let people choose out of their neighborhoods as much. They've tried to put the people they want in those schools, but there's been pretty mixed results. There's still some good schools in this city and there are some schools that, that are not doing so well. John Lee Evans said, "I've seen Vision 2020 basically to fruition." He, he referred to the school board as like a, what are those big Navy ships that are hard to turn? I'm blanking.
Aircraft carriers.
Like an aircraft carrier. He referred to it like an aircraft carrier.
Catchphrase game. It's a big thing, the airplanes. They land on it. Tom Cruise, you know.
Good job. You guys nailed it.
Here to help.
Anyway, John Lee Evans is saying, "Yeah, they're, they're on track for that. And so I was never going to stay on here forever. My work is, is done as far as I see it."
I mean, yeah, at a certain point, I understand people leaving. Who wants to serve one of these positions in perpetuity? But I, I mean, Vision, Vision 2020, is it fair to call it mission accomplished at this point?
I don't think that's a fair-
I mean, now, in, in his defense, it's a, it's a sprawling document. It's a type of thing that would be hard to ever put a flag down and say, you know, vini vini vici. But, but he kind of is saying that.
He is saying that. And they always, the shorthand of the way they refer to Vision 2020 is a quality school in every neighborhood. So I'm just going to use their words, you know? And I mean, there are nine traditional public schools in San Diego Unified that showed up on the state's list of worst performing schools in the state. That's like bottom 5%. And not, we're not just talking by test scores. We're in a new era here where we judge schools more holistically based on like if kids are showing, just showing up to school and stuff. And, and at some of these schools, the chronic absenteeism is just through the roof. So I don't think there's a world in which you can say there's a quality school in every neighborhood. No. Is, is San Diego Unified doing a fine job? Are they maybe doing better than some other districts? Sure. But, but they haven't created, turned every school into a quality school.
What is even like the, I feel like quality school is so vague. Like what are some of the indications for that?
Well, so chronic absenteeism would be one that we're, that gets talked about a lot more now. Like what percentage of students are chronically absent at that school? At really good schools and elementary schools, it might be like 7%, 8%. But at other schools, it'd be 30%, 40% chronically absent, you know? So that's, that's a school where either the kids are having such social problems that they're not showing up, or the school is also like not necessarily a welcoming place for them to be. But then obviously, we still have test scores as a metric for how schools are doing. Other ways, maybe we judge quality as like the standard of the physical structure, or do, do people have the books and things they need? You know, sometimes in poorer neighborhoods, a lot of times, schools will say like, "We're, we're, we physically don't have the tangible objects we need to run the school." So there are a lot of ways to judge it. San Diego Unified hasn't given us a clear one to use to hold them to their standard of completing Vision 2020. So I, we just have to choose our own, I guess.
All right. So Will, let's talk a little bit about what's going on in some of these schools. You also reported this week that a group of principals from San Diego Unified sent a series of memos calling out district leaders for not providing enough resources for schools. Tell us about that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we were just talking about the united front of San Diego Unified and how if you talk to board members, if you talk to officials, this is a district that is really punching above its weight. It's doing better than other big city districts. Turns out, the principals of the high schools do not think that. They have been in a series of meetings with the superintendent and wrote some pretty blistering memos saying that the district leadership is not serving the schools well. You know, they're, they're not giving us the resources we need in special education for English language learners, for math curriculum, for HR. Like the list was, was pretty endless, actually. And I, really, the, at the root of it all, they seem to be saying like, "Our relationship and trust with you is broken." If I could just read you a little zinger of a quote here. "Principals feel demoralized due to lack of transparency, communication, and support." So I, I mean, I don't think it gets much worse than that in terms of your working relationship with your bosses.
Yeah. So tell me about this group of principals. Is it, is it a, like an ad hoc group that came together on their own?
Yeah, kind of, but they didn't come together for this. It is an ad hoc group, but it's, there's an elementary group of principals, a middle school group of principals, and a high school group of principals. They each have their own informal group. It's not a union. They've existed for many years in the district.
Yeah. So it's a, it's like a, for lack of a better term, it's like a committee that the, the district has put together for principals to talk to each other.
Exactly. And be able to raise concerns to district leadership. And, and these principals, the high school, the principals had, had some concerns a couple of years ago, too. So this seems to be like long simmering stuff that they were willing to put in writing and send to somebody, which is saying something because they know that means that someone like me might get my hands on it.
Right, yeah. Putting things in writing is always a deliberate decision among government employees. I mean that, I mean that, seriously.
That is a fact, yes.
I mean, no one who works in government is naive to what that means.
Right.
So has the district responded?
So the district's response was like one of the most fascinating parts of the story, actually. So I asked District spokeswoman Maureen McGee for a comment about all these principals, like myriad concerns. She pointed me back to the principals themselves. So I guess there was a directive from Central Office that these principals needed to respond to my concerns.
Which is rare.
Yeah.
You don't typically get directed to school site-specific people. The district wants to speak for the district.
But the even weirder thing about it to me is it's like, if you think of traditional journalism, there's two group, in a story, there's like two opposing sides usually. And you'll get comment from one side and you'll get comment from the other side. In this case, we had the principals versus the district office. I asked the district office to defend their side and they just directed me back to the principals.
Yeah, yeah.
Who then kind of undercut these scathing documents. You know, they just said, "We're really happy to be working with district leadership to move to a positive place," you know? And it just completely was, was the opposite of what had been in the memos.
So, well, let's get back to the memos then. What, were there any like specifics, any tangible concerns that they had raised?
Yeah, they raised several. And so there's a couple of really tangible ones. One has to do with English language learners and one has to do with HR processes. So the principals really hammered HR. And they said that there were a couple of problems. They couldn't keep teachers that they wanted to keep, keep in their schools, like teachers who are there filling in for leave or credentialed teachers. Sometimes they're very good teachers. Principals wanted to keep them, but HR was making that difficult. They also said they wanted to be able to do more out-of-the-box programs, but HR was keeping them boxed in on the programs they could do, which I didn't totally know what that meant. I haven't got it figured out yet. But they said, what did they say? "When principals complain about HR policies, procedures, and practices to executive leadership, they are met with indifference, feigned ignorance, perfunctory concern, or disdain, and-"
Wait, is this written by a list of journalists?
That's a big word there.
That was not bad. Perfunctory concern. That really hits.
Feigned confusion is the one that as a reporter who has to bring concerns to, to government agencies, a lot I'm familiar with.
They also said, "The district seems to function as a whole to serve unions and not school sites," you know? So, so I think that was the big HR complaint there. "You're keeping us from getting the people we want in here and putting the systems in place to do a good education and, you know, we can't do it."
And they specifically said that they, they believed that the district was overly responsive to union concerns.
Exactly. And not really responsive at all to principal concerns. Principals do have a union, but it's not very strong for principals.
Right. Interesting. Yeah. And we, you know, we've seen a lot of principals getting pulled out of, out of the class or out of the school site and put on special assignment and that sort of thing.
Totally. They're much more at-will employees.
Yeah. Interesting. Well, it's fascinating. So is there anything to look for going forward from this? What, you know, it seems like maybe they wanted to take a shot across the bow. That message has been delivered and they're willing now to kind of play nice? This is my read on them giving you a quote after the fact about how happy they are to work with them?
I don't see them going on NBC banging the drum for, for making the case for the stuff they need. So I, I think it is going to be really interesting to see if they just quiet down now. You know, I think that the, the amount of leverage they have is limited. Will they try to use it or is all this just going to get swept back under the rug is the, I think what I'll be looking to answer.
All right. Fascinating. Well, we'll, we'll trust you to keep us updated on that. Everybody else, we have to sign off here on KOGO. Stick around on the podcast. If you're here, we're going to talk to Adriana about her story about walking to school with a student in San Ysidro whose bus was slashed. Otherwise, thank you for joining us on News Radio 600 KOGO.
Hi, y'all. It's Will with Voice of San Diego. Before we get back to the show, I wanted to take a quick minute and personally invite you to our next Parents Guide Community Meeting. If you didn't know, every year, Voice of San Diego puts together a guide filled with information to help parents pick the right school for their child. It includes an overview of every public school's performance in easy-to-read charts. You can see how the school does on test scores, if it has high rates of chronic absenteeism, if it has after-school care, and lots of other stuff. It also has lots of handy definitions about magnet schools, charter schools, and how the choice process works. That's a lot to digest, but we want to help you break it down. So join us Tuesday, September 17th at 6:00 PM at the City Heights Library for our next meeting. I'll be there to answer your questions about San Diego schools. And if you want to check out the guide on your own, go to vozd.org/schools. Again, vozd.org/schools.
We are back. All right. Adriana.
What's up?
All right. So you had an, an interesting story a couple of weeks ago. It actually kind of blew up, kind of went viral.
It did, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting that.
I, I sort of was. I was not surprised by this. Talk to us about Jose Luis Perez.
So I met Jose Luis at a district, Sweetwater District Board meeting a couple of weeks ago. And what was interesting is that him and his mom were speaking to the board about, you know, him having to walk to school now that the district decided to cut bus routes. And the mom had mentioned that he was getting rashes all over his skin because he, you know, San Ysidro High School is along a canyon and he walks very early. And so, so afterwards, I decided to talk to them and I just straight up asked his mom if I could walk with him. And she probably thought I was crazy, but, but yeah, she said-
I mean, it's, it's, it's worth taking a step back. It's remarkable that she would think you're crazy for asking if she could, you could walk with him to school. That shouldn't be like a, like a brave request. You know, like a walk to school should be simple.
Right. Well, she, well, she said, she's like, "If you can get up at like 4:00 AM."
Right, right. She's like, "Why would anyone want to do that?" What he has to do.
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, no, yeah, I did it. The next day, I, you know, I woke up the same time that he did and I met him at home and it was still dark outside.
Yikes.
And I just followed him around with my camera and I walked to him to school, which is about three miles to his high school. And I just got to talk to him about, you know, what he does at school. He told me he's involved in several clubs. He's like around 20. He's part of ASB. And-
20 clubs, what a kid.
I know, right? But you know what sucks is that when I was walking with him, he was telling me all this stuff. I was like, "Well, you know, what do you, like, what college do you plan to go to? You know, like, do you want to go to like an Ivy College, like Harvard or Stanford, whatever?" And he's like, "No, no one's a kid from San Ysidro." And I was, I just was so shocked and I was so sad to hear that. And I was like, "What do you mean? Like, you know, like you're a great kid and you're obviously dedicated." But, you know, it, it was just kind of really sad to hear that.
Well, we should just say, Adriana went to, you went to Sweetwater Schools. I mean, did, so did that response really shock you that, that that's like how a Sweetwater student would view themselves?
Well, I went, I, so I went to Castle Park for a year and then I switched schools to Olympian on the east side of Chula Vista. But Castle Park is notoriously known as like a school with a lot of, you know, low-income students, a lot of troubled students. And so it, it surprised me when I heard him say that, but then it kind of took me back to, you know, some of the students that I went to school with and, you know, that sort of sentiment that we all had, that it's like, everyone thinks, you know, basically we're crap and we're not going to end up doing anything with our lives. So it was sad to hear mainly because it's been a couple of years since I was in high school. And so to hear students now have the same sort of feeling, it's really frustrating.
Yeah. These, these were like amazing images you took of him, too. You know, this story of the bus route being cut was really big deal. In the South Bay, the, the, the moms were protesting and, and everything, but like you took it a layer deeper by following to school and, and giving us this like intimate images of somebody who's now having to spend hours a day like getting to and from school because the school's not going to help them with that anymore.
Yeah. So the reason why he wakes up so early at 4:00 is because he has to be at school by 7:00 and it takes him about two hours to walk there. So he gets up, he gets ready, and then around 5:20, he starts walking. And one of the, his first classes is Zero Period, which is ASB. So he has to start obviously getting involved in that. But that's, that particular day, his class after Zero Period was PE. So you can imagine walking up, you know, three, like a big hill, three miles, and then having to do physical education after that. It's just, it's exhausting.
Yeah. So what was the, so the, tell us a little bit about the route, though. So it's, it's up a hill. There's, the school's on a canyon side, lacks a sidewalk, right?
Yeah. So you, basically, you're just a couple miles away from the, the border, the US-Mexico border.
Sure. You're visible to the border the whole time, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah. So you walk there. It's a very busy area because there's a lot of commuters that come in and out of San Ysidro. And one of the bigs, the long sort of walk that he has to take is along a hill that's along a canyon in San Ysidro, which recently just got new sidewalks, which the community had been asking for, for years. I mean, I know that Liam was reporting on that a couple of years ago.
Back in 2013, I think he did a big series about that?
Yeah. And it just recently unveiled.
And that, that story pre, that, the push to get the sidewalk predated his writing about it in 2013. So it's-
It's been going on forever. Yeah. And they recently opened the sidewalks, I think in March, earlier this year.
Right. Yeah, they haven't been open long.
Yeah. And so it's a, it's a new, it's obviously nice, you know, obviously new sidewalks. But it's a long road and it's a long hill that cars just kind of pass by super fast. And so a lot of the concerns are like, "Well, okay, our kids are walking alone in the morning. Along this canyon, there's animals, coyotes." And there's also cars that just like speed by, you know, and can hurt our, you know, children. And if they try to take like a bike or like a skateboard, they can kind of, I mean, on the way up, it's kind of hard to bike up a hill. And on the way down, you know, you kind of, you increase your speed, right? So I mean, if you try to brake, then you can kind of hit something really bad and hurt yourself. So parents are sort of thinking this like, "Okay, I understand that there's like a new sidewalk, but there's so many other contributing factors that I don't feel safe having my kid sort of walk to school in the morning by themselves."
And so just to, for a little bit of context, this bus route- And so just to, for a little bit of context, this bus route was cut for a very specific reason. Will, you had written quite a bit about this at the time. Tell, tell us a little bit about the financial picture for the district.
Yeah, yeah. Sweetwater has been in a financial, um, tailspin, let's say, for, um, the past 12 months pretty much. And, and these cuts and many other cuts are the result of that. Uh, last September, a year ago, they, the district suddenly kind of realized, we were told that they had overspent by $30 million the previous year. That's, that's 10% or more of their budget. So that's a, it's a really huge deal. And so to right the ship since that time, they've had to, uh, they cut teacher planning time. They cut some summer school. They cut some after school.
Laptops for seniors.
Yes. Seniors don't have laptops this year. So now that the cuts are really coming home to roost, I think you're, you're seeing a resistance pick up in, uh, the South Bay and Sweetwater School District over this. Last year, I think it was like a, uh, maybe it was more of a wonky financial story because people didn't feel the cuts yet. Now that the cuts are happening, people are like, oh yeah, where's that $30 million and like, who is being held accountable? There are two investigations ongoing into that $30 million in quote overspending. Uh, it's possible people were cooking the books, the SEC is looking into it, uh, the state agency is looking into it. So we'll see.
All right. And so Adriana, not just your story, other stories have covered the lack of, um, of bus routes here. And as you say, the parents have really organized and I mean that like capital O organized around this issue. They've been barnstorming these meetings. Um, they got, they got a bus route put back in place for Jose Luis.
So a couple of weeks ago, the, um, the district, the district, uh, announced that they were adding one more bus route. So that's not, not, not one, not one new bus route, but one new bus in the bus stop that was already established. Um, so essentially more kids that can take that bus.
So it increases the volume, but not necessarily like the geographical area that's covered.
Exactly. So I think they said 110 seats will be, um, open and, um, I guess there's like a waiting list for them. And so, but parents are still, you know, saying like, yeah, this is a good step, but you know, um.
But Jose Luis is still walking to school.
He's still walking to school.
He did, this, this doesn't, route doesn't work for him or he just couldn't get a seat.
Right. Yeah. I think, I think it depends on like where you're located at, because I think the rule is 3.5 miles from your home.
Yes. If it's more than that, the district is required to provide transportation.
Right. So it depends on where the student lives. And I guess there's like a, a drawing after that to see who gets the seats.
And Jose Luis is like 3.2 miles from school or something. So he's like under the cusp.
And also, I mean, he has to get to school way earlier than everyone else. Um, so it's kind of like, well, taking the bus in the morning. It's, it's too late for him.
I see.
Um, but he also takes it in the afternoon as well, which I mean, well, summer just ended, but you know, we live in San Diego. So summer's not over until like November, but, um, you know, he has to walk to home two hours in, you know, the blazing heat. Um, so it's really difficult for him. And you know, you said that the parents have been really active, but I think also the students have been so outspoken as well. Um, if they've organized to, and they recently had a meeting with district officials where, you know, they called them out. Um, I think it was superintendent, um, Carrie Janney, like she said that there wasn't a crisis and the kids are like, well,
That's right.
we're walking to school. We're taking shopping carts and putting our backpacks. Yeah, we're taking shopping carts, putting our backpacks and like, taking them up this big giant hill. And you're telling us that there's not a crisis, like.
That they're like, if there's no crisis, give us our buses back.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. So.
Such a classic example of an agency unwilling to just embrace their own vulnerability. It's like, you're so concerned with maintaining appearances that you haven't worked yourself into a crisis, that you get yourself into a situation of telling a bunch of kids who are walking through a canyon to get to school every day, that like this is somehow in the realm of the normal course of business?
Right. And, and.
Wouldn't it be easier to just concede that there's a crisis?
Yes, you would think so.
You would think, but you know, would we have a job? I don't think so. I think we, all three of us would be unemployed. If districts were more open about that. Um, but I think the district also kept, keeps saying that like, you know, they're not required by state law to provide these buses, right? Will? I think that's.
Yes. I saw this, this was like a, an op ed they put in the UT the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We, and, and, uh, I think you quoted a parent who said, um, well, it's really disappointing to know that your generosity had an expiration date, right? Because yeah, they were saying, well, we were giving more San Ysidro, more buses than we needed to. And we always planned to scale that back. And the parents were like, uh, thanks?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that.
It's a coincidental that it overlaps with when they overspent their budget by 10%.
Yeah.
Exactly. And then that opted, uh, that the superintendent wrote, nowhere does she mention the budget crisis. She kept saying that this was like, they need a more state funding. And so it's like, wouldn't it also be the fact that, you know, you misspent $30 million? I'm just, I'm just guessing, right? And maybe that as well.
What would a government that can be vulnerable look like? You know, I, I would love to see that.
I would love to see it too.
One day.
What would our job look like to Adriana's point? Uh, well, so, so tell us, Jesse wrote, um, earlier, uh, earlier this month about a somewhat similar story in Oceanside. And you were just telling me before we got on the air that, uh, some of the parents in San Ysidro have actually become active in that fight as well?
Yeah. So Jesse Marks are, um, one of our reporters here, uh, told me about a week or two ago that, um, you know, parents in Oceanside were facing similar things. You know, they kept saying how, um, the same thing that was happening to San Ysidro students was happening to them up there where the district was trying to cut their buses. Um, and it's gonna affect like a predominantly Latino, low income community in Crown Heights. Um, and so they organized a walk as well where they all walked the same route that the students would have to walk. And you know, Jesse and I went up there as well and we walked it with them. And let me tell you, it was, it was a pretty brutal walk.
What was it like? What was it like?
Um, I was sweating a lot. Um, and one of the little girls asked me if I was okay. She's like the six-year-old girl and she's like, looking at me dripping sweat.
Skipping along like, what's, what's wrong with you?
She's looking at me dripping sweat and she's like, are you okay? I'm old.
Adriana just always dunks on herself. Talk to Adriana long enough, she'll start dunking on herself.
Um, but no, it was again, it's a brutal walk and it's again, up this giant hill, they have to go down by like a freeway, down the highway, sorry. And you know, busy streets, um, and then through, um, train tracks as well. So.
They cross train tracks.
Yeah, exactly. So imagine that, doing that in the morning, you know, sometimes you're alone and you're carrying, you're a backpack full of bucks. So, um, so yeah, earlier this week, uh, the district, a lot of the parents decided to go to a district meeting. Um, and the San Ysidro moms, uh, heard about it and they decided to join them up there. So, uh, they took the long drive and sometimes your mom, moms and students were up there to support the parents in their fight.
It sounds, it sounds like we need to add a school bus panel at our transportation polit fest coming up. This is going on all over the county.
I, it really, it is going on all over the county and it is a serious, you know, factor in, to the extent that transportation is the largest driver of climate change. People don't just drive to and from work and back. They drive, drive their kids to and from school and back too. This is, you know, these are, if, if you care about emissions, there's no reason to exclude getting to and from school from your consideration.
Absolutely.
And another thing that I've heard a lot with this story is, you know, a lot of people are like, well, when I was younger, I used to have to walk like five miles up hills and you know, like my dad tells me that all the time. My dad's from Mexico and he's like, oh, I have to walk through mountains. But you know, you have to realize that if you had the option to have transportation, would you have taken it? Like, I'm pretty sure you would have.
Well, it's funny. I'm the exact opposite of those people. I grew up and buses was, were just a given.
Yeah, absolutely.
I went, all the people in my neighborhood went to the same bus stop every morning. It never seemed like a token of generosity. It's just seemed like the way we got to school. I don't, I'm, I'm consistently like alienated by the, by the situation here where there's like something very strange about the expectation that you would have a school bus.
Absolutely.
Isn't a orange school bus like a icon of American education? Like what am I missing?
California?
I don't know.
It's so strange.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm exact, the exact opposite of those commenters who talked about how tough they had it. I had it very easy. I thought everyone.
We all get a bus. That's just like, we all get a textbook. We all get a bus.
Exactly. Yeah.
You think, you think, right? But I mean, that's not the sentiment I've been hearing a lot of.
Like, were these people just like watching The Simpsons all these years and they're like, bus? No one, no one has buses. Unrealistic.
Well, some people have been like.
Like, is it, like kids are always getting on buses. This is a part of popular culture, right?
Like it'll be good for them.
Chris Cross had a song about, about missing the bus. We could play it.
It hasn't filtered down to San Diego, but we should play that though.
We should.
Well, no, there's a lot of people are like.
Bump that right outside those school district offices.
Well, the, the thing that I've heard too was that, you know, the whole, you know, this is good for them. They'll build character and everything. And it's like, okay, imagine walking two or three miles.
Yeah. Should, maybe we should break some glass and put it down in front of them.
That's a bad defense to rest on. It builds character.
All right. Well, thank you. Good work. Uh, keep us updated on any, uh, anything that changes there. Uh, hopefully the financial picture for the district improves or maybe the state comes in to rescue them, which it seems to be what they're asking for.
Uh, yeah, or comes in and says, uh, somebody broke the law. They're, they're definitely not hoping for that one.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, anyway, that is it for the show. Thank you all for joining us. Scott and Sarah will be back. We didn't even talk about Scott and Sarah not being here.
Oh yeah, they're not here.
We're okay without them.
Yeah, it's fine.
Wouldn't you say?
It's fine. Anyway, uh, yeah, I think I hear somebody out in the back popped champagne bottle. All right. Uh, Scott and Sarah will be back next week and it's Will, the rest of us. Thanks for listening to the Voice of San Diego Podcast, the most popular public affairs podcast recorded in downtown San Diego. If you'd like to keep up with all our education reporting, make sure you subscribe to the Learning Curve Newsletter. Every other week we'll send you a roundup of the latest education news in San Diego. Go to v o s d dot org backslash newsletters to sign up. I'm Andrew Keats, Assistant Editor at Voice. This show is produced by Nate John, Adriana Haldese and Megan Wood. We'll talk to you next week.